I would like to welcome everyone to the January 13th, 2022 work session of the Henrico County School Board. At this time, I would like to make note of Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Atkins' physical absence from today's work session. Ms. Shea and Ms. Atkins previously notified myself, the Chair, of their request to participate electronically from remote locations due to a medical condition and personal reasons, respectfully. Our School Board policy P2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, requires a majority vote of the board members present at the primary or central meeting location to allow board members to participate in a meeting from a remote location. In accordance with the school board policy, do I hear a motion to approve Ms. Shea's and Ms. Atkins' participation in today's work session from remote locations?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the School Board approve Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Atkins' participation in today's work session electronically.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella. It's been properly moved and second that Ms. Shea and Ms. Atkins participate in today's work session electronically. I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Ms. Shea and Ms. Atkins' request to participate in this meeting from remote locations have been approved. This meeting is being live streamed on the HCPS website. We'll begin our meeting first and foremost with a roll call. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Ms. Consella?
Here.
Ms. Ogborne?
Here.
Ms. Shea?
Here.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that a quorum of the board is physically present and Ms. Shea and Ms. Atkins are participating electronically from remote locations. I ask that Ms. Shea and Ms. Atkins verbally note if they need to leave the meeting and subsequently verbally note when they return. The next item on the agenda is the actual approval of the agenda, is the motion to approve the agenda. Ms. Atkins, I'm sorry, I apologize. Is there a motion?
I move that the School Board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. Roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is the election of School Board Chair. I will hand that over to Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the Board and to our viewing audience. So, the next item is, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, the election of the School Board Chair. So pursuant to Chapter 7, Title 22.1 of the Code of Virginia, I'm now going to conduct the election of the new Chair for the School Board for 2022. The School Board Chair will serve the calendar year 2022 and thereafter until his or her successor is elected and qualified. Are there any nominations for the position of School Board Chair?
Madam Superintendent, I move that Mrs. Marcy Shea be nominated for School Board Chair.
All right. Mr. Cooper has nominated Marcy Shea as Chair. Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing no other nominations, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion on the nomination of Marcy Shea as Chair?
Second. Is there? I move that we nominate Marcy Shea as Chairman of the School, Chairwoman of the School Board.
Second.
All right. So moved. I'll now take a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogborne?
Aye.
And Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And no one's abstaining, so the motion passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Shea, Madam Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. It is now my pleasure and privilege to conduct the election of the Vice Chair of the School Board for the calendar year 2022 and thereafter until his or her successor is elected and qualified. Are there any nominations for the position of School Board Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board approve Mrs. Consella to serve as School Board Vice Chair for the calendar year 2022 and thereafter until her successor is elected and qualified.
I hear the nomination of Ms. Consella. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion on the nomination of Mrs. Kristi Consella as Vice Chair?
I'll do it again. I move that the School Board approve Kristi Consella to serve as School Board Vice Chair.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any opposed? No any abstentions? The motion passes. Congratulations, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Kristi Consella. At this time, I am pleased to conduct the election of those individuals to serve as Clerk to the School Board and Deputy Clerk to the School Board. By School Board policy, nominations for these two offices will come from our Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Cashwell, do you wish to make a nomination for the Clerk and Deputy Clerk to the School Board?
I do, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to nominate Mrs. Kathy Harris as Clerk to the School Board and Ms. Tiffany Burton as Deputy Clerk to the School Board for the calendar year 2022 and thereafter until their successors are elected and qualified.
Hearing no other nominations, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion on the nomination of Mrs. Harris as Clerk to the School Board and Ms. Burton as Deputy Clerk to the School Board?
I move that the School Board approve Mrs. Harris to serve as Clerk to the School Board and Ms. Burton as Deputy Clerk to the School Board for the calendar year 2022 and thereafter until their successors are elected and qualified.
Thank you, Mrs. Consella. Roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Congratulations, and thank you to Ms. Harris and Ms. Burton. In accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-76, the School Board is required to approve a designee of the Division Superintendent to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the Superintendent to attend. Dr. Cashwell, do you have a recommendation?
I do, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to recommend Dr. Beth Tigen, Chief of Staff, as the Superintendent's Designee to attend School Board meetings in my absence or my inability to attend.
Is there a motion to accept the Superintendent's recommendation of Dr. Beth Tigen, Chief of Staff, as the Superintendent's Designee?
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board approve Dr. Beth Tigen, Chief of Staff, as the Superintendent's Designee to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the Superintendent to attend for the calendar year 2022 and thereafter until their successor is designated.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And then the next item is our establish of meeting dates. Dr. Cashwell, do you have a recommendation?
Hold on just a moment. A board member had a question.
Mrs. Shea, I'm going to just bring up one item before you continue. On that last, the last two motions, we needed a second for those two motions. And so I think we need to go back possibly and get a second.
Okay. My apologies, I did not have that noted. So, Ms. Ogborne, is it the Deputy Clerk and the Superintendent's Designee?
Yes.
Is that what you're speaking of?
Yes, ma'am.
My apologies. So let's roll back to the Deputy Clerk and Deputy Clerk. We had no other nominations, and so could we have a motion on Mrs. Harris and Mrs. Burton as the Clerk and Deputy Clerk?
And if a School Board member would just like to second the original motion, I think that would be sufficient since you all already voted, and I believe it was the will of the Board that there be a second. It was just a clerical error.
Oh, my, okay. Would anybody like to second that?
I'll second both of them.
All right. There we go. Little housekeeping items there.
All right. Okay.
My apologies, Ms. Atkins, is that sufficient?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And so, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board, I would like to recommend that the School Board establish the second and fourth Thursdays of each month as the meeting days of the County School Board of Henrico County, Virginia to comply with Chapter 7, Title 22.1, the Code of Virginia, annual organizational meetings of the School Boards, noting that meeting dates may be added or changed throughout the year as necessary.
I second that motion.
Is there a motion to approve the second and fourth Thursdays of each month as the meeting dates of the County School Board of Henrico, Virginia?
I so move, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes. At this time, the next item on our agenda is to move into closed session. Do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
I move that the School Board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under Item A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific School Board employees.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. Roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We are now, motion carries. We are now in closed session.
The meeting of the School Board for this afternoon is back in session, and I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that for the ease of running the meeting, since we have two board members working virtually today with us, Mrs. Atkins and Chair, Mrs. Shea, that I'm going to be chairing the meeting in Chair Shea's place this afternoon as Vice Chair. So just to disclose that upfront, that Chair Shea is virtual and just for the ease that I'll be running the meeting. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Reverend Cooper for leading us fearlessly through 2021. And we just, on behalf of the entire Board, Dr. Cashwell, and the School Division, we'd like to thank you for your leadership. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of us. Mrs. Consella, if you don't mind, Reverend Cooper, I want to thank you for stepping in when you did and being there when we needed you, as you always are and have been for years. So thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is certification of the closed session. Board members, can I get a motion to certify a closed session?
Madam Vice Chair, I move that the School Board certify by recorded vote that, to the best of each School Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Well, thank you, Reverend Cooper, for making the motion, and Ms. Ogborne, for seconding. Now let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Chair Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. And the next item on the agenda is items from the Superintendent. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you, Vice Chair Consella, members of the Board. For the first item, I am seeking the Board's approval of the appointment of administrative personnel.
Board members, is there a motion to approve administrative appointments? I move that the School Board approve the administration, excuse me, administrative appointments. Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I get a second?
I second it.
Okay. Well, we'll take your second, Chair Shea. Now let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Chair Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. Administrative appointments have been approved.
Thank you. The Board has just approved Deidra Trent, Associate Principal, Donahoe Elementary School, and Kara Jean O'Neill, Assistant Principal at Freeman High School. We welcome our new administrators. All right. For the next item, I am going to provide the Board an update from our Health Committee via health and safety conditions related to COVID-19, and Dr. Tigen is coming forward to provide that presentation for the Board, and of course, we look forward to answering any questions you may have as well. Dr. Tigen?
Good afternoon, Chairperson Shea, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for giving me an opportunity again to provide an update from the HCPS Health Committee this afternoon. Today's agenda includes the current transmission level for Henrico, a quick review of the key prevention strategies, an update on efforts to vaccinate our five-to-11-year-olds, and provide boosters to those 12 and older, a reminder about expectations around masks and masking, and additional opportunities for COVID-19 testing, and a change in isolation and quarantine guidance adopted by the CDC previously and by the VDH recently. As has become the norm, I will start with the transmission level. On Monday, the VDH released the most recent health data for Henrico County. The transmission level within Henrico remains at the highest level. Based on the seven-day data from January 1st to January 8th, the number of new cases per 100,000 was up to 1,436, and the percentage of PCR tests that were positive was 32.8%. Now let's discuss the school impact. As we examine the level of school impact, it's important to note that due to winter break and inclement weather, our data represents only two school days. We continue to monitor student staff absence rates, and while the overall student attendance was 94.2% for the comparable two days in 2019, last week, the overall student attendance was 82.9%. The staff capacity remains strained, and this is due to ongoing staffing shortages combined with isolations and quarantines of staff and/or their children. Yesterday, we saw teacher absences decline slightly with 395 absences and approximately 68% substitute fill rate. Through the support of the additional permanent substitutes, our regular substitutes, and central office staff and teacher coverages, we have continued the important operation of serving students in our schools. Before I leave this slide, I would like to note, that you'll see in lime green at the bottom, that beginning on January 1 of 2022, the Virginia Department of Health is using a revised COVID-19 outbreak definition. The new definition is three or more lab-confirmed COVID-19 cases who are epidemiologically linked within a 14-day period without another more likely source of exposure. Given the high level of transmission that we are currently experiencing in Henrico County, I felt it might be good to review the nine key strategies Henrico County Public Schools is committed to as a layered mitigation strategy to prevent the spread of COVID. As you'll recall from previous presentations, prevention is most effective when all strategies are layered together. Henrico County Public Schools has focused throughout the pandemic on the layering of all these prevention strategies, but I want to highlight several as reminders for staff and families by focusing on the following strategies: vaccinations, masks, testing, and isolation and quarantining. I will start by sharing what Henrico County Public Schools is doing about vaccinations. We continue to partner with the Virginia Department of Health to provide vaccination events for those needing their primary series or a booster. The role of the booster has changed, and it is now part of the quarantining decision-making process for those individuals 18 and older. We do continue to focus on the five-to-11-year-olds receiving their initial two doses of the Pfizer vaccine. The second-dose clinics at the four pilot elementary schools shown on the top of this slide were delayed until this week due to last week's inclement weather. If every student receives their second dose this week, an additional 295 HCPS students will be among those who have completed their primary vaccine series, and in two weeks, they will no longer need to quarantine if they are identified as a close contact to a positive case. Given the current success of in-school vaccination clinics at the four pilot schools, plans are currently underway to provide additional, two doses of the Pfizer vaccine at the remainder of our Title I elementary schools in late January or early February. This will mean vaccinations will be available at an additional 16 elementary schools in the coming weeks, and those 16 schools are listed on the bottom of the slide: Adams, Ash, Baker, Chamberlain, Donahoe, Fair Oaks, Harvey, Highland Springs, Holiday, Johnson, Lakeside, Longdale, Montrose, Ratcliffe, Sandston, and Ward Elementaries. As we've done at the pilot schools, only students enrolled in the school will be permitted to participate in these vaccination clinics, and student vaccinations will require written parental consent and will occur during the school day without the parent required to be present. The Virginia Department of Health or one of their partner pharmacies will administer the vaccines to our students. The principals will be sharing information with their communities, and the principals will work with their family advocates, their school nurses, and social workers to reach families who might benefit from this opportunity for their child to be vaccinated at school. And if need be, someone will go to the home to assist families with completing the consent form, and the consent forms will again go out in multiple languages. In addition to the vaccines, we are also pivoting to offer boosters to our students ages 12 and up who have already completed their primary vaccine series six or more months ago. As you may recall, vaccination clinics were held at Fairfield and Elko Middle Schools earlier in the fall. There were two clinics at each site, three weeks apart, to provide opportunities for 12- to 15-year-olds to complete their Pfizer primary vaccination series. This resulted in over 385 primary doses being administered to our students. In addition, 144 family members received their boosters. Given the success of these clinics, we have asked our VDH partners to provide additional Saturday clinics so students may receive their boosters if they've completed their primary series at least six months ago. I am sure some wonder why the focus on boosters. It is important for families to know that based on new VDH guidance, students who are 18 or older and have completed their primary vaccination series over six months ago and have not received their booster will be required to quarantine should they be identified as a close contact. The same is true for our staff members. While vaccines are the most important prevention strategy, masking is also very important. The current State Health Commissioner's Public Health Order and the CDC guidelines for schools require all students, teachers, staff, and visitors age two and older to wear a mask indoors in public pre-K-12 settings, regardless of their vaccination status. Thus, HCPS requires masking within our schools as well as on our buses. Masking on buses is required by a federal order governing transportation. Masks should be well-fitted, covering the mouth and nose, and be multi-layered. It is important to note that masks, that masks we have continued to supply at each school and work site are multi-layered and meet the CDC and VDH as well as OSHA requirements. In addition to the multi-layer mask provided to all staff, nearly 4,000 KN-95 masks have been distributed across our 72 schools and program centers to provide staff an additional option for PPE. Youth KN-95s have been ordered and will be distributed when they arrive. Medical-grade N-95 masks, which require individual fit testing, were provided to staff in our clinics, as well as certain special education staff who work in very close contact with students to do such things as diapering, toileting, hand-over-hand assistance, to name a few things. Face shields, gowns, and gloves were also provided to these staff for their optional use. So let's move to the third prevention strategy, which is testing. Each school continues to be stocked with take-home kits for students and staff to use when they are presenting with COVID-like symptoms. They are provided when a student or staff member has been identified as a close contact as they may test from home before returning to school. We understand that the testing supply chain has been strained, but we continue to monitor our supplies and proactively work to obtain kits as they are available. We continue to participate in the Vista Program and test our winter student athletes and our coaches on a weekly basis. In addition to the take-home kits, we continue to partner with our local health district to make more testing available across our community as we have done with the vaccines. As supplies increase locally, we continue to find ways to make testing more accessible. We are proud of how our county government, our county manager, emergency manager, employee health, and others have prioritized community safety and the importance of assisting the School Division in our ongoing efforts. We are grateful for their ongoing support. We've shared the testing hotline provided by the county and the link to the test site information for the county in our communications to our families and our staff. Last of all, we have expressed our interest in participating in the Test to Stay Program. The program is currently being piloted at only 10 school divisions across Virginia at this time. It's a program designed to keep healthy students in school rather than quarantining. With this program, unvaccinated students who are close contacts to a positive case may return to school as long as they are symptom-free, take a daily may return to school as long as they are symptom-free, take a daily at-home test, and provide negative test result each day for five days. The Test to Stay program is not a weekly testing program for staff, and staff are not able to participate in this program. Of course, the VDH continues to host community testing events, and as demonstrated by this week's COVID-19 testing schedule at the Richmond Raceway as well as other sites throughout the county, there's ample opportunity. While most of these events occurred early in the week, additional COVID-19 testing events are planned for the foreseeable future. The Richmond Raceway will be operating as a community testing center from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays, Sundays, Mondays, and Tuesdays, beginning with this Saturday. Appointments are required for COVID-19 testing at the CTC Community Testing Center. Individuals can schedule an appointment up to three days in advance. So this brings us up to the updated isolation and quarantine guidelines from the CDC and VDH. You know, finally, we as we continue to monitor and consider the latest guidance from the health experts, I want to share updated information about HCPS's isolation and quarantine guidance. The conversation about reducing isolation and quarantine times began December 27th with the CDC releasing information with changes for the general public. After this guidance was released, we consulted our VDH partners, who shared that school divisions should consider additional guidance related to K-12 education, which they felt would be forthcoming from the CDC. As expected, on January 6th, the CDC updated their isolation and quarantine webpage and its K-12 webpage to incorporate K-12 setting-specific guidance, which included the reduced isolation and quarantine timelines. The next day, on January 7th, the Virginia Department of Health updated the When to End Isolation and Quarantine document, which reflected the new guidance from the CDC. As a reminder, we work with our VDH partners for contact tracing support and guidance, and it is important that our practices are in alignment with and supported by our local health district experts. Therefore, as we consider changes to our plans, we heavily consider their input. When the HCPS Health Committee met this past Monday, the latest guidance from the CDC and VDH were reviewed. Here is a summary of the new guidance compared to the previous guidance related to quarantining. The new guidance for close contacts who are not fully vaccinated, COVID testing is recommended on Day Five, and the individual may return on Day Six if a negative test result, symptom-free and 24-hour without fever-reducing medication can be verified. Previously, close contacts had to test between Days Five to Seven and return on Day Eight if they were provided a negative test result, or symptom-free and 24-hour fever-free without fever-reducing medication. The other change is related to vaccination status. The new guidance for those 18 years old and older, if they are eligible for a booster, they need to have received it to avoid quarantine. Previously, those 18 and older were not required to have a booster to avoid quarantine. The HCPS Health Committee recommended the new quarantine guidance be adopted for students and staff, and this recommendation was supported by leaders, the leadership team, and thus will go into effect tomorrow, January 14th. Updates have been made to our flow chart for quarantining and our FAQ documents to reflect the change and will be available, as always, on our website. And as promised, we always keep our families and staff up to date regarding any changes, and will communicate this change to our stakeholders today. Out of an abundance of caution, the Health Committee did not recommend adjusting our current isolation practices at this time, despite the update in the new CDC and VDH guidelines on isolation. This decision was responsive to current health, current local health conditions affecting HCPS, specifically the high level of community transmission. As a reminder, isolation guidelines apply to those who have tested positive for COVID-19, while quarantine guidelines apply to those who are identified as close contacts to a positive case. The Health Committee will continue to include isolation timelines as a topic of consideration as we monitor local transmission, and Henrico County Public Schools will update our stakeholders should any further adjustments be made to our isolation practices. And last, given the high level of community transmission, staff and families are asking about the criteria to shift a class or a school to remote learning. Senate Bill 1303 clearly states that divisions can only consider remote learning as a temporary measure when there are outbreaks at the classroom or school level. Only at that time and in consultation with the Virginia Department of Health may consideration be given to a temporary shift to virtual learning for only such time as needed to control the outbreak. Simply put, it is a case-specific decision-making process related to classroom and school outbreaks, not community transmission levels, and each situation is unique. Again, metrics related to outbreaks or transmissions within schools are used rather than community transmission rates. The details of the number of cases, outbreaks, et cetera, are reviewed in collaboration with an epidemiologist from the Virginia Department of Health. This is the same process used for any other communicable disease such as influenza or chickenpox, and I am happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for that presentation, Dr. Tigan. I'd have to say, based on the inbox and the telephone and anywhere we board members went this week, these were all very hot topics, so thank you so much. Let me see, let's start virtually this afternoon. Chair Shea, would you, do you have questions for Dr. Tigan?
All right. This is all good. Thank you, Ms. Consella. Thank you, Dr. Tigan. I would be remiss if I didn't start by just acknowledging both for our staff and for our families just how hard everything is right now related to all the COVID things and the transmission rates and isolations and quarantines and instruction, and it is all hard for everyone. And so I'm just a deep thought appreciation for all of our stakeholders and all the extra that they're pouring in right now. Dr. Tigan, can you speak a little bit to, I know I've gotten some questions about why the guidance is different for vaccinated students and staff, vaccinated people versus unvaccinated people, provided that we are seeing breakthrough cases, particularly with the Omicron variant?
Yes, the, both the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health have not wavered on their guidance related to unvaccinated versus vaccinated students and participation in testing as well as quarantining. My understanding is that this is related to the difference in transmission between individuals who are vaccinated versus those who are not. And so there, I guess, easily said that there's less, it's less likely that someone who's fully vaccinated or has completed their primary series and/or had their booster would transmit to someone else than someone who was unvaccinated. And so the guidance just has not, you know, continues to be that there is a difference in quarantining.
Thank you for that clarity. I also really appreciate the clarity on that, close to that last slide, as to when would a class or school shift to remote. I know we've been getting a lot of those questions, and I think you spelled it out very clearly in terms of, and let me just repeat it, and you can repeat it back to make sure I heard correctly and our constituents heard correctly, that those sorts of decisions are driven in consultation with the VDH, and it has to be confirmed outbreaks through the VDH that would trigger some sort of pivot to virtual.
Correct. It is in consultation and based on the data within the classroom or within the school.
And we have done that on the, we have had to do that thus far this year on the classroom level in some of our schools thus far, correct?
We have.
Yeah.
Very minimal.
Yeah, this is something that we are responsive to. Could you talk a little bit, I know there's a lot of buzz about how staffing could impact a closure, could either you or Dr. Cashwell speak to kind of any provisions or limitations there are there? And when I say closure, excuse me, I don't mean closure, closure, I mean a pivot to other, other modes.
Sure, I'll tackle that one. So I think, you know, as Dr. Tigan shared, when it's looking at shifting to remote based on reasons related to COVID-19 transmission, I think she provided that answer, which is specifically that SB 1303 has that provision that when there is an outbreak, a school division could consider, again, in consultation with the VDH, that pivot to remote for the period of time, and that might be at the classroom or school level. And I think what you're asking, are there any provisions if, if staffing were to be of issue? That is not a provision within SB 1303 related to COVID. There is, there are other governing factors for public schools in Virginia that allow divisions up to 10 days of remote learning, only in cases of an emergency, a time when a school would need to have an emergency closure. This specifically, the language in that piece deal with things like inclement weather and/or other emergent situations, a power outage in a school that would impact the safety of students. And so if a division were to pivot to remote for that, again, unplanned remote learning day due to an emergency closure, there is a provision within that requirement that school meals be provided as well as other specific services. So, I mean, I think there are some considerations in there that might constitute something like that if there were to be a true staffing emergency, but, you know, otherwise, there is not a provision for such.
And it sounds like it would have to be utilized on a very limited basis with the cap of 10 days and the other services required.
Those services would be required, yes.
And just to piggyback on that, since you mentioned inclement weather, we've gotten a lot of that question as well, and I think that points to that when slash if we have another snow day, it's not as easy as just saying, oh, let's log in virtually. Is that what I'm hearing?
It is, and, and, you know, so what's different this school year, along with that, those governing factors for public schools I mentioned, is that, you know, if you were to pivot to remote during an emergency closure, perhaps related to weather or snow, there is the, you would have to provide meals, et cetera, for it to constitute as a remote learning day. And so it's not to say that can't be accomplished, but there are lots of factors that have to be considered in how we make sure we can provide those core services to our students, even if we don't open in person and we're to be remote. So I say that to say, virtual learning during a snow day is not off the table, it's certainly doable, and we would intend to want to try to leverage that option to the extent we're able. But that would mean considering, you know, meals being served perhaps in advance, if not during the snow day where it may be unsafe to operate food service curbside. Chances are, if we're closing during emergency weather, that'd be a safety consideration, as well as thinking about making sure that our staff and students have the materials and tools needed to do that, devices already at home, you know, obviously, our, our previous snow days, which may be on folks' mind, we were coming right off of a two-week holiday, so there were some complicating factors there as well when you think about having devices on the ready, et cetera. And of course, we want to make sure we've provided our staff, particularly our teachers, with the right tools they have to engage sort of on a dime if it's an emergency closure to be able to engage in remote learning.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Dr. Tigan, you also mentioned access to K-95 masks. We are seeing a lot of data come out that's talking particularly with this variant about how important the kind of mask we are wearing, and, you know, we've been providing multi-layer, well-fitting, but we are now providing access to K-95 masks. Can you just reiterate how our staff and/or students access those if that is their desire?
Currently, they, currently, there are only KN-95 masks in the school for our staff. The others are pending, they're coming, they've been on, they've been ordered, and we're anticipating their delivery. That if a staff member, they just need to go and, and see their COVID liaison or their principal. In each school, it's probably different where they are, but one of those two individuals can certainly direct them in the, you know, in the direction that they need to be for their school.
And I'd like to add too that the student masks that we do have available are surgical multi-layer masks that meet that requirement, and while the KN-95 mask is another option for staff, you know, well-fitted is important, and the size of those, it's larger, so it wouldn't be a well-fitted option for most of our students, but the masks we do have on hand are appropriately sized for that use. But, you know, as Dr. Tigan said, with the additional youth KN-95 masks coming in, that's yet another option for students should they wish to select that.
Thank you so much. And then my final question relates to the Test to Stay program. I know timelines are like nailing jello to a wall right now, but do we have maybe a rough idea on, right now, it's in 10 school divisions, a rough idea when that might be able to be expanded to a division as large as ours?
No, there is, the, the feedback right now is, you know, the supply chain issues are impacting, you know, not only localities, but the VDH as well, and so most of the schools that are in the pilot are only doing limited schools within a division, and so while we have expressed our interest and asked to be considered for that, I don't know what, they haven't indicated a timeline for coming back to say, yes, we would like to accept you into this program.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, and that is all from me, Vice Chair Consella.
Well, thank you, Chair Shea, and now, now from you, and I just want to take another opportunity, Ms. Atkins, to thank you for your service and contribution on the Henrico Health Committee on behalf of the board. What questions would you like to ask Dr. Tigan, or what information would you like to share?
Thank you for that. I want to start with thanking our county partners, our board supervisors, our manager, Mr. Vitokas, for providing families opportunities to whether they're getting a testing kit to take home, whether they're getting tested, vaccinations. I had an opportunity to go and visit two sites. I went to the Fairfield Recreation Center off of Burnham, and then I went over to Highland Springs later that afternoon, and we had folks wrapped around buildings, and, you know, just to see access in places where it's accessible makes a huge difference. And so I'm very, very grateful and thankful, not only for providing supplies and staffing to make it happen, but it's equally important to put it in locations where families can reach the services and reach the resources. And I just want to just pause and just thank them so much for being, being methodical, being strategic in selecting places where families can reach. And then, secondly, to the Health Committee meeting all the time, whether we're meeting as a group together discussing changes, or we are individually meeting with individuals, it is, it is a lot of work, and I want to take a moment just to acknowledge that, and it's, and we're going to continue, and it's important just to pause as well, just to say thank you. So, Mrs. Consella, I, I receive your thanks, but I think it's important to pass that along to every single person on this committee and then our partners, whether it's VDH or... and then our partners, whether it's VDH, you know, local health in Richmond or Henrico and surrounding areas that provide input. It's all needed and necessary. And then, my focus is less on questions. Chairwoman Shay took care of most of my questions, so thank you for that. So I could just focus on some of the thoughts that I was having during the presentation. And I also want to address our families, all of our families. I usually do SASEN, Henrico, Highland Springs, and Verona, but I thought about all of our families, within Henrico and outside of it, but specifically to our Henrico County Public School communities. And I, too, I understand being disappointed. I understand being angry. I have those emotions right now. And so I understand how hard this is in navigating this pandemic. You know, it feels like, you know, in the beginning, we were in this infancy phase. We were learning and here we are two years later. And guess what? We do know more and we have done more. And human life paid, and it's going to continue to pay the price for our wisdom. And I'm hopeful that it's, that we remember that, that there are human lives that were paid and are continuing to pay the price for the wisdom that we have in navigating this. And so I thought to just offer a way to navigate this thing. And I thought about, instead of reinventing the wheel, what comes to mind? And it's Zig Ziglar, and I'll share that quote. It is, "Your attitude determines your altitude." It, I've heard it over and over again, but it resonated me, resonated with me more right now. And I think as a community, our attitude towards the strategies that Dr. Cashwell presented, or perhaps you've seen some strategies somewhere else, that is going to truly determine how quickly we get to the goals. And for me, the goal right now, stability. It is sustainability and healthy lifestyles. And, you know, I apologize for taking this extended time, but I think it's important to do that, just to share my thoughts right now. And our brain is certainly an organ, it can be trained like some of the other organs in our body. And I just ask our families to consider a positive attitude as we continue to navigate this thing. It is hard to do that. And having a positive attitude is a decision. It is truly a choice. And if you are that individual or if it is this group that can't choose, it's okay. Just talk to a trusting individual that can help you figure it out because our attitude right now is either going to lead us and be our greatest asset, or it's going to be our biggest liability. And if we train it to see positivity, I believe that we're going to get to see and we are going to feel the best part of us. And what motivates me to say this is so that our kids can see it too. And so if we collectively do that and we show, we are going to, to show our best selves because we are choosing to train our brain to understand and see positivity, then our children can see that. And we are being examples of behaviors that we want them to model in our school buildings. Our children, when they walk in our buildings, are certainly models or reflections or mirrors of what they see and what they hear. And so I don't know to you if this sounds like a plea, if it sounds like begging, whatever word you choose. But our children are watching us. And as hard as this is, because it really is, if we can find a place to choose positivity towards our prevention strategies, we can get to where we want to be. So much, so much for you.
Vice Chair, the floor is yours. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Kinsella. So, Dr. Tiggen, quickly, I know that we have 72 facilities, not including all of our other programmatic centers, but do you have any kind of idea how many at-home test kits are currently on hand? Do you have any idea?
I don't have the balance as of today because that's a moving target. We started coming back from break with over 4,000 kits across the division.
So with the production and distribution of supplies from manufacturers, Ebning and Floying, which our kind of contingency plan to ensure that we continue to have available to our, our schools, the kids?
Well, the VDH has prioritized us as a Vista Division. We are a priority over other divisions to get supplies as, as they have their stock. We are also, Ms. Barry has been looking for other vendors that can also provide inventory for our students.
So we want to make sure that our constituents and our students and staff know that we do have a plan in place. We are prioritized and we are pretty confident, given the current context, that we would have available the tests.
Yes, we are active. We have been actively on top of this since we came back from winter break. You know, we were, we were proactive before the break, but then seeing what was happening over the break, trying to really go into, you know, to more advanced problem solving for, should there be a problem.
I appreciate that. That's very comforting and confirming for me. So I know that we're all concerned about the impact transmission is having on our schools. And although transmission within our schools is moderate, student absenteeism is slightly above baseline and staff capacity is strained. Are we seeing any trends with certain schools or within certain districts with staffing challenges, higher student absenteeism? If so, what are we doing to kind of curtail that?
Well, great question. Dr. Grant and her team have been monitoring the teacher absences as well as other absences at schools. They're prioritizing additional staff to those schools who have greater need, but also looking at what can, you know, what are some maybe other underlying causes for the absenteeism that she and her team can address, you know, to reduce the number of absenteeisms.
Thanks so much for that, Dr. Tiggen. And how are we coming with the mandatory testing for our winter athletics? Is the vendor doing what we need? Are we on, on target for what we set out as our perspective? How are we coming with that?
I would say that yes, we are. Last week, obviously, things were disrupted as a, since it was not a normal school week due to the inclement weather, but we have been testing this week. We have made adjustments to our testing schedule, not our testing time. A couple of schools changed days. So to be responsive to their needs as far as, like us, they have employees that are quarantining or isolating and so, but they are still meeting our needs at our schools.
Well, that's awesome. And I'm glad that we're continuing to move forward with that path forward on that. Last question. So I just was thinking about, you know, when we had virtual learning and we had available help desks for our technology piece. Have we ever, this might be to you too, Dr. Cashwell, just, just, just thinking, right, a centralized, central office position to provide COVID-19 help desk functions for families to have the email or phone call? Is, is there funding for a position like that? Have we considered a position like that? I mean, just, you know, answer questions about quarantine time, close contacts, testings, when to return to school, that kind of function?
Coincidentally, we were having a similar discussion today. At one point, we did, you might recall, we did stand up a Henrico Schools hotline and we were able to man it by having folks who were assigned other duties to take on periods of time where they would be on, be able to respond to that hotline. So it is an intensive effort, but we understand the need. You know, for example, we provide the county testing hotline and some of the other hotlines, but we've often thought as a great service for Henrico families, besides our website, kind of in other one-stop shop, would, would it be with so much going on, possible to stand up some sort of a hotline, even if for a limited hour? So we actually have looked into that. And to the extent we may be able to do so, even for a temporary period of time, just given all that's going on, we may be able to do that.
Well, that's awesome because for me, just the centralization, you know, with the VDH and the CDC, it's a constantly moving target. And, you know, it can be overwhelming, you know, what's the definition of close contact? You know, how do I determine, you know, if my child quarantines at five, is it 10? Just, you know, just speaking, kind of just hypothetically in regards to the possibility. I know that we have budgetary constraints and no staffing issues, but for me personally, just, it just came to me that that might be something we could at least consider. So I'm glad to hear that. So look forward to hearing updates on that. Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, Madam Vice Chair.
All right. Well, thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Agburn?
Thank you. Most of my questions or comments have been already said, but I just have a couple. Could you give us some more on the Test to Stay program? That is the most consistent thing I hear about in emails and phone calls, is, is wanting to know more about how it works, but also when are we gonna, or are we going to fully implement it? So if you could give us a little bit more on that, if you've got any more information.
Well, we, we have raised our hand to say we are interested. It, you know, so we're at the mercy of waiting for the VDH to come back to us or the VDOE to say that they have an opportunity for us to participate.
Right.
And what happens is, is if a child is considered a close contact to a positive case, then that child, rather than quarantining, the parent can agree to testing the child every morning.
Every morning.
And so the intent would be that we would provide them with the number of test kits they need so that for five consecutive days, they would be able to test. Now, they don't have to test on the weekend. So if they were to start on a Thursday, then Friday they would test, Saturday, Sunday, they would not need to test, but those are two days. And then Monday, Tuesday, they would test again and they would be negative before they came to school that morning.
But the question I'm getting is, can we do this on our own? I'm getting this a lot. And can we do this and implement a program like this without VDH? I'm guessing no, but I just think we need that information out there.
And I would point out that, you know, because this means moving away from the guidance of the, of quarantining. So in this program, unvaccinated individuals who are close contacts would be able to return. So that's not currently the protocol in place with the VDH or our own health protocol. So in order to do that, would be under the supervision of the VDH and VDOE through the pilot program. I will point out, it's a very limited pilot. I believe it's 10 school divisions and within those school divisions, only like a select few schools. It isn't division-wide. That's my understanding of the implementation. It was only first made available at the very end of December with school divisions who are the pilot, school division just now beginning this program. So I think there's much to be learned from the program. Certainly has some promise. We want to be able to keep our students in school learning as they're healthy. And so it does have a lot of promise. We did raise our hands, as Dr. Tiggen said, and, you know, we're very interested to be a part of it. But we'll want to certainly vet the success of the pilot, which is brand new. And as she also indicated, you know, next steps would be hearing from them that we would be, you know, in the next phase. But I imagine, given they're just at the very beginning stages, there's much to be learned. And then certainly, another limiting factor, even if we could deviate perhaps from the guidelines, would be the number of test kits that would involve. And I think supply chain is, is also, you know, you're looking at going home rather than with one kit, but enough to cover your, your, a number of days testing.
Well, and like I said, this is the most consistent question. People are hearing about it. They like the idea of it. And conceptually, sure, you know, the idea would work. But I think if we've learned nothing in the last two years, we really need to be careful how we proceed. So, you know, letting something pilot and trying it out, I think is, is obviously makes sense. The other thing I wanted to just kind of pass along, that is not necessarily under the purview of the Health Committee per se to make decisions, but is implementing our testing. I'm hearing from some parents, privacy issues in how things are being done at different schools. I mean, for example, I've got an email from a parent who says, "My child was called out in the middle of class. If you're an unvaccinated athlete, essentially, go to the office now for testing." And so, and I've had parents say that their kids were dismissed at a certain time because of exposure. They're having to walk through the cafeteria. Everybody sees them leaving. Things like that where some of our unvaccinated students feel like they're being spotlighted in some way, that they are unvaccinated. And obviously, not every student in the middle school or high school can be vaccinated. Some do have medical issues, some think for whatever reason, they've chosen not to be vaccinated. I'm just hoping that the message can be sent to our schools, be a little more sensitive about that, that issue. I have a number of parents who have expressed this concern, that they're making the decision for whatever reason, you know, and, and that is a privacy matter. And if there's any way our schools can be a little more cognizant of identifying our kids who are unvaccinated, I, I think that's feedback that I'm getting consistently, that I know we are all doing the best that we can do. And that's what I tell the parents. Obviously, this is not intentional. It is not something that our schools are being callous and just, you know, not thinking. It's just all hands on deck right now. And I think our schools are doing, by and large, in 99% of cases, doing a great job. I just think there's, maybe somebody wasn't thinking at that moment. But just to pass that along.
We will pass that feedback on to our schools and make sure that at all times, they're, they're mindful of, not only of student privacy, but of the sensitive nature of the matter in general. And I just want to reiterate for the record, though, that participation in the Winter Athletic Program does not, is not a marker of your vaccination status. The program is for both vaccinated and unvaccinated athletes. While it's required of those who are unvaccinated, individuals may be vaccinated and participating.
Right.
So participation in itself is not a disclosure of your vaccination status.
Well, and I think sometimes people are making assumptions about, you know, just because a student left at this time, their privacy has been, has been infringed upon in some way. I think, you know, I just wanted to share that is, is a concern that I'm hearing about. But as everybody else has done, I'm gonna, I will say it too, thank you for all you're doing and for Mrs. Atkins serving on this committee. Certainly, some of the most important work we're doing right now to keep our kids safe and in school. And, you know, kudos to the team for meeting over and working over winter break because I know there was probably not a day off for a good number of our staff members. And, and, you know, that, it's the young tongue heroes, you know, just to me, it's, it's, you know, but thank you. It's, it's the least we can do to show our appreciation for all the hard work. But thank you. And Mrs. Kinsella, I am done.
Thank you, Ms. Agburn. My colleagues certainly covered the bases, but as usual, I still have a few questions left. So I'll be, I'll try to be as quick as I can, but I do want to be thorough since I believe so many people will actually watch this back. The presentation was so thorough and I'm grateful because with the transmission levels surging like they are, and we knew they would likely during break, I just want to highlight, we still value health and safety. But even with that being said, I'm so glad that, you know, our PPE questions have been addressed. Student access to virtual assignments, their, their access, especially at the secondary level, I'm hearing from a lot of, from a lot of folks about that. And even with the change to the quarantine, it's still going to impact our isolated, you know, our students that test positive. So is there any, are there any changes that we're expecting there? Because as Reverend Cooper mentioned, you know, the attendance rates in general, but also our students and families, our students that are tested positive. Are we changing anything?
Our goal has been since the start of the year, that if an individual's isolating or quarantining, that they have access. And they're well enough to participate, mind you. There are individuals who are sick and they're sick. So if you're marked quarantine but present in learning, there are a number of ways you can engage in learning and our teachers have the option to leverage both virtual, whatever might meet the needs of the student and family for virtual assignments and that sort of thing. We do have guidelines in place for our school about making sure our schools, rather, that there are certain common protocols where staff are touching base with students who may be out regularly and so on, setting deadlines for work that may need to be made up because a student may not have virtual access during the time that they're on quarantine and so on. So I'd say the bottom line is, we continue to strive to work with our individual students and families because all cases are so different during the time. and families, because all cases are so different during the time a student may be isolated or quarantined. And we have provided our principals guidelines to share with their staff on making sure that's as smooth an experience as possible, you know, but we'll continue to reiterate that guidance to our schools, I think, to make sure that we're doing all we can to meet individual needs.
And is that link, do we know, is that link included in the communication that's gonna go out to families, probably after today's meeting as a result of this? I mean, I would imagine, it's already out on our website.
It is on the website.
It's currently there, and it hasn't, there are no updates or changes to the documents, and it still exists. And I think we can certainly reiterate the expectations around that to our schools.
I would appreciate that. I've gotten a lot of questions in the past week specifically around access and what do they do when their kids are out of school. So I appreciate that. I'm really glad to see that we've added additional sites at our schools for vaccination, because at last meeting in December, I only saw one of my schools there in the Brooklyn District, and that was Dumbarton. And I'm very pleased to see Holiday, Johnson, and Lakeside added. So thank you for realizing the need in the Brooklyn District and providing that access. Let me see. Earlier this week, the county manager declared a state of emergency. So what does this declaration provide for? Does it provide money to hire additional staff or perhaps any employee bonuses? Or is it just procurement-related to purchase testing kits or other COVID supplies?
The intent really was to be able to procure things faster so that we could access them, you know, the easiest way possible to make sure that our inventory was maintained. And so that was the intent.
Okay. And this next question is for principals everywhere on this Principal Appreciation Week. As we move forward, is there any plan to remove the contact tracing duty from our principals, administrators in our buildings?
It is currently, you know, that they are sharing responsibilities between administrators, nurses, different staff members, you know, there are different staff members in each building. That's been a school-based decision. You know, we are still contact tracing with the level of transmission. We need to be able to maintain a healthy environment. And so that is a task that remains needing to be done.
I'll just say, if there are any additional funds to pay any additional staff to help remove this lift, I mean, everyone is, it's all hands on deck. I understand that.
And we do have some positions that are designated for supporting contact tracing. If people are interested, please look on the website and reach out and ask questions, because those positions are there. And we'd love to have candidates that would like to assist.
And our substitute positions are out there as well, right?
Absolutely.
And do we anticipate emergent, emergency funding would not be used for that, would it, to perhaps pay more for substitutes? Or I know in online comments today, there were some comments, especially from board subs regarding pay. So there's been no, has there been any discussion of that? Because if not, I'd like to just say it on the record and request it.
Well, you know, when the positions were added, we did add more full-time positions with benefits, hoping to attract candidates, which is a change, you know, in adding those to our schools. We do have full-time with benefits perm sub positions, as well as we're looking for more daily subs. And I think when you're talking about the state of emergency and whether that brings any additional funding, no, it does not. It's a procurement strategy leveraged by our government, appropriately so in this time of emergency, to ensure that they're able to acquire the necessary supplies, you know, to have important services like public education and so on continue. But it doesn't have any additional funding. We have leveraged our ESER funding, however, to add these positions, add contact tracing positions, additional clinic assistance, and, you know, to your point, making sure that while this is always gonna feel like an extra heavy lift, that we have more hands on deck to help, the challenge has been with the staffing shortages and being able to find candidates who were able, qualified candidates to bring onboard. But we're gonna continue to look. We've been pleased to onboard a number of staff so far. You've heard our updates around people transportation, our job fair held just this week, I think as the Tuckahoe Library. We continue those recruitment efforts and hope to have more people join our team, because we do have a number of positions that were created just during this time with our ESER funding to assist our schools with this.
Well, thank you. I know especially at one of my schools last week, we had, I heard from quite a few constituents about staffing. So I would have been remiss had I not mentioned it today. So thank you. And then lastly, as we move forward and as the surge declines, has the committee discussed, are you guys talking about perhaps some kind of transition, what comes next? Perhaps working on your plan now, if this, then that? And if you are, I'd just like to suggest that you please focus on the mindset shift, as everyone has experienced different things throughout this pandemic. And coming out of this pandemic is gonna affect everyone in different ways and how they respond to it. So I would just ask you to consider that. But are you guys working on that right now?
We talk all the time about things that may, you know, that we see maybe on the horizon, that we wonder, just to be prepared should things happen. We have not specifically addressed mind shift here.
Okay. I would ask that that be considered, because even when transmission numbers come down, it's gonna be interesting as we shift, because it's gonna mean different things to different folks who have experienced different things in almost two years, right?
And I would be remiss if I didn't say that actually, Ms. Atkins sort of mentioned that this last week, as far as starting to really think about, you know, the time period, you know, transition, thinking about transitioning out of COVID into what is the new normal.
Right.
So that's definitely been on her mind, and she shared that with the team.
Yeah, I think it's on everyone's mind. I mean, even children are saying, you know, it's been almost two years, right? So, so thank you. That's all I had, and thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. And again, thanks to, not only to you, to the Health Committee, and to our incredible HCPS team for the all-hands-on-deck effort. That's each and every one of the HCPS team members has had to lift a heavier load of late, and it is not unnoticed. All right. So for the next item I'm bringing forward, I'm really pleased to provide the board an update on our first, not our last, but our first telehealth clinic, which we know is at Glen Lee Elementary, as well as plans to implement a hub system related to our full-service community school effort that has been underway for a number of years and growing. So pleased to have Adrienne Cole-Johnson here, our Chief of Family and Community Engagement, who will kick off that presentation. Adrienne?
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Greetings, Chairwoman Shea and members of the board. As Chief of Family and Community Engagement, I am honored to stand before you this afternoon. During this time, I will provide updates regarding our community schools initiative, in particular, the new Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic, and progress updates on the first full-service community school site for Henrico County Public Schools. During my last full-school board presentation in May of 2021, we shared general updates for the community school initiative. Yet this is a great opportunity to share additional detailed updates, approaches, and happening since then. I love to start with a refresher of sorts regarding what community schools are and why this national model is great for Henrico. A community school is a public school, the hub of its neighborhood, uniting families, educators, and community partners as an evidence-based strategy to promote equity and educational excellence for each and every child. It is also an approach that strengthens families and communities, promoting vital resources and connecting students and families to services that can help them thrive. As we consider the community schools' approach, there are four pillars that set the foundation for success. They provide the most current and relevant ways to ensure the proper protective factors are in place while using a whole-child, whole-family approach to 21st century education. Integrated student supports that link students and families to a range of health and wellness offerings with the aim of removing out-of-school barriers to learning. Expanded learning opportunities that highlight the value of providing additional programming before school, after school, or on weekends. Collaborative leadership and practices embodying a spirit of collective impact as we lead and learn together and share the responsibility for student outcomes. And last, but not least, family and community engagement, ensuring high-impact strategies that place parents, caregivers, and community leaders in position to enrich our students' The Henrico County Public Schools' belief in the right to achieve and the support to succeed for all truly lives in this model. Studies have found that the community school or full-service community school approach has had a positive impact on student attendance in elementary, middle, and high schools, has had a positive and significant impact on elementary and middle school students' on-time grade progression, and suggests a reduction in disciplinary incidents for students. In addition, but just as importantly, well-implemented community schools lead to improvement in students and school outcomes and contribute to meeting the educational needs of students that may be struggling in lower socioeconomic areas. In addition to the vision, this effort is in full alignment with the four cornerstones, in particular, the strategic goals of fostering an inclusive, safe, and supportive climate, as well as our goal of cultivating and maintaining meaningful collaborative partnerships. What this looks like is a hub and spoke model with our schools well-positioned and connected with local partners and in regular collaboration with staff, families, community, and business partners. This also looks like full-service community schools throughout the county that are open to students and families. The spokes or schools are accessible during school hours, and while out-of-school time is often present, it may be limited. Traditional school space is available for programs and services, and there are offerings to support most students enrolled in that school. The hub can be viewed as a more robust, deeper extension of what our community schools look like, with accessibility after school, on weekends and summers, services for the entire community, and additional space outside of traditional space. As HCPS has moved along this path, we've had the pleasure of launching the first spoke in our will, the Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic. In 2017, Community Health Status Assessment, CHSA, assisted community members, health, and service providers, and elected officials in learning about health trends and disparities in the community, determining priorities among numerous health issues, prioritizing resources and planning, and taking action to equitable improved health in Henrico County. From this assessment, a partnership grew between HCPS, Henrico Education Foundation, and BCU Core Health that focused on the effort to bring the first health clinic to the county. Through this partnership, the work of making this vision a reality has taken place, which led to the launch of the Telehealth Clinic on November 30, 2021. Based on the data analysis, Glen Lee Elementary School was chosen as a pilot program for a telehealth clinic that will provide the following: medical services, dental services, and mental support, mental health support for students and their families. This innovative initiative significantly highlights one of the four pillars of the community schools' model that was discussed earlier: integrated student supports. Let's take a peek at how things are going at the Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic.
Hi, I'm Tamika Campbell, serving as principal at Glen Lee Elementary, and I am here in our telehealth clinic, coming to you to just talk to you and let you know how we continue to be excited about the opportunity to serve our students via telehealth services. Our students are going to be able to benefit from the telehealth clinic by telehealth services. And you can see the monitors here. Our staff remain ready to serve our students through the telehealth clinic. We are excited about the opportunity to be able to reach out by web camera in order to talk to a doctor on the other side. And that is how our students are actually going to be serviced. Our nurse will come in, and if the nurse determines that our child needs to see a doctor, then they will get online with the doctor through VCU. And one of the doctors who we're in partnership is going to have the nurse assist with seeing the child, providing the vitals, and then making recommendations for the child's medical care.
Hi, doctor. How are you today?
This is gonna help our families in tremendous ways. Of course, having this service is going to support our families who have difficulty with transportation. It's gonna help our child, most importantly, get the medical assistance faster, which we hope they will heal quicker and be ready to learn. And they'll rule out some things so that we can get them back to class sooner. This has been a great collaboration project between our family engagement team, with our central office team members, and members of VCU. We're just excited about the partnership and start to continue to grow the opportunity for our families to take advantage of this awesome opportunity.
Hello, my name is Hattie Crawley, and I'm the family advocate of the great Glen Lee. And I'm here in our telehealth clinic that has been set up, and this has been set up to assist the parents and the families in our community, to empower them with the knowledge of health information. The reason why that it is here, like I said, to empower them, we have some students that from day to day will come in sick, but if they can use this particular resource and this device, it will enable them to maybe stay in school a little longer and continue learning, continue their education. Also, I would like to give a great shout-out to Ms. Jones and Ms. Wallis, who have gotten to know our students here and our families, and just assist them with the knowledge and the wealth and the health of their information.
Hi, I'm Tamika.
All right. All right. So collaboration for innovation has truly been a theme for this project. I know that the staff has been working extremely hard to continue their engagement with this project. And so a special thank you to the great Glen Lee Tigers for their commitment to this initiative. Another huge thank you to our amazing partners. The weekly calls, training, and partnership has been amazing. Partnership is really highlighting the unique skills of all for shared outcomes, and this is exactly what has been on display. I believe our good friend Mike Taylor is here in the room, Mike. And I would like to give him a mention for being right there alongside us on this project and so many other projects that we have here at HCPS. So a big thank you to the HEF team for your investment of time, effort, and resources in our students and families. During the ribbon cutting, we were able to hear from some of our students, and I'm taking a few words from one of our students, Jane Nayer Karanya. Our thank you to partners is not only from staff and adults, but also from our students who are glad they've had this opportunity at Glen Lee. Next up in my presentation is the Full Service Community School Initiative at 15 South Oak Avenue, the old Holland Springs Building. One major update is our renaming of the space, so that it may have an identity of its own. I am inserting a drum roll and slight suspense here. The Oak Avenue Complex. The Henrico team is beyond excited about efforts around the Oak Avenue Complex. The name is an effort to bring together the geographic boundaries of the area, steeped in the meaning of an oak tree. The oak tree is one of the most loved trees and is a symbol of strength, morale, and knowledge, and it's often associated with honor and wisdom as well. When we pondered on what this new initiative will mean for our community, it absolutely fit. So moving forward, we will refer to the old Holland Springs High School as the Oak Avenue Complex, or the Oak, or possibly the OAC. We are still figuring that out. So as an extension of what has been shared... So as an extension of what has been shared, this slide illustrates a bit more of the differences and detail of the full-service community school. The goal is to embody as many of the listed areas as possible for optimal support, whether we are discussing youth development activities, college, career, and citizenship, community engagement, or health and social services, the more components, the better. There will be a full-time resource coordinator on-site to ensure that all aspects work together. I would love to recap our listening tour. The family and community engagement team had a blast this past fall out and about in the community. We participated in over 25 school events, hosted informative virtual roundtables, and attended various community gatherings where we were able to collect written feedback from 243 community members, although we talked with hundreds more. It was great to learn from our neighbors and to get a true pulse of the interest. While we attended several events, the majority were in the areas most proximate to the Oak Avenue site in our Verona and Fairfield districts. We received much information, but I wanted to give a high-level share of some of the questions and answers that stood out during our listening tour. First, what services and programs will be most helpful for students? Responses were in alignment with what we intuitively anticipated, yet it was helpful to have this confirmed from the community. This slide shows the areas where respondents felt the services were either extremely helpful or very helpful. Enrichment, clubs, counseling, and STEAM were all high on the list. Academic tutoring and after-school activities as well. These services and programs will be prioritized as we align components of the Oak Avenue What supports are families looking for? In receiving input, we wanted to know what some of the perceived challenges and opportunities were in the community. This slide highlights responses of 25% and higher, and also gives us a peek into the type of support that should be at the Oak. While many of these are not surprising, we are well-positioned to collaborate with partners to best address these needs. Family stress, mental health concerns, and safe after-school options are just a few. This last share, similar to the first, zeroed in on what parents and caregivers would be interested in. We know that the whole-child approach is best supported when adults are also whole. Academic supports, youth development, health and wellness, and financial planning are just a few that were mentioned. We were encouraged to see interest in bridge opportunities where educators and caregivers are able to connect with each other regarding their students. Again, this listening tour was informative and very helpful as we charted the details of how the Oak Avenue Complex will form. Next, what are we doing to get there? We are working intently in parallel paths to open doors to the Oak during this calendar year. With the focus on stakeholder engagement, operations, planning, and design, and implementation, we are confident that we will get there with adequate collaboration throughout the county. Our first quarter focuses on partnerships and collaborations. Continuing this work, we are connecting with various HCPS departments, Henrico County agencies, and community partners who can rise to the services and programming of interest to the community. A special mention to Lenny, Susan, and our facilities team, as they have started to explore what is needed to ensure all components work together. Program planning has begun, and this month, we are beginning district-based work with various stakeholders as we outline our design. Lastly, implementation. We are looking at a staggered approach, starting with the soft launch of the partnership-based components that will be led by family and community engagement. The goal is for spring of 2022. This will be followed by an official launch in fall of 2022 with our learner-based approach. It is also important to keep in mind that we will grow into this space, remaining nimble and responsive to the needs of the community. To conclude, we will end with our why. Why community schools in Henrico? As we forge ahead through this pandemic, understanding that it has illuminated our opportunities for increased coordinated services, we are doing all that we can to remove barriers to learning with an equitable engagement lens. This effort allows us to do this while still supporting the HCPS strategic plan. As always, thank you for your time this afternoon and for your ongoing commitment to the students and families of Henrico County. I welcome any questions or comments.
Well, thank you for that presentation, Ms. Cole Johnson. Who would like to start? Let me see, Reverend Cooper, it's between you and Ms. Atkins. How about you start us?
All right, so thank you so much, Ms. Cole Johnson, to Mike Taylor and the team for always the excellent work that they do, and I'm excited about the continued opportunities that Glen Lee provides, especially to the Fairfield District, and the model that it will be for our expansion of the program, as well as our community-based school. So thank you again for the update, look forward to hearing more and to see more as far as the evolution of it. So two questions for you. At our Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic, the school nurse and the Children's Hospital of Richmond provide the medical services. VCU Dentistry will provide the dental services. The question I raise, is there a provider secured who will bring, who will be providing the mental health supports? Is there a timeline for launching the mental health services?
I will do my best to answer. I'll look at my partner as well, Leslie. But absolutely, so we have a liaison with schools through Henrico County Mental Health that is really staying connected there. We've been in really close communication with our mental health and wellness team within HCPS, and also the work around our trauma-informed specialists. I have to shout out Amy Johnson, who's been right there along with this project as well. Is there anything else to add?
No, I think you did, I think you did excellent job. To answer your question, Reverend Cooper, that is something that we've talked about on our roadmap. As you said, right now, we have the medical health and we have the dental health, and we would like to have some mental health on the horizon, so we are looking into that. But in the meantime, we'll follow our same procedures where our school-based mental health team, our counselors, our school psychologists, and social workers will continue to serve the students in the school, working with their mental health liaison from the county.
So are we saying that right now, we're going to handle it internally?
That's correct.
Is the goal to bring in an external mental health partner, as we've done with medical and dental, or do you foresee us trying to continue to do it internally?
Right this moment, we'll continue to do it internally, but it would be our goal eventually to look to that end.
And Dr. Cashwell, if you have something to add?
I think you all have covered the main points. I would add, just in talking to our team with VCU Health, you know, this is a portal to that initial connection with a physician, but just like if you went to a physician's office in person, they might refer you to other services. And so in some cases, it might be that through this connection, a child is referred to other mental health resources that might be necessary outside the school day, but as the team has indicated, we do have a number of resources right there at the school. I know some of the early work with the school at Glen Lee included having a representative from SCAN, focusing very much on that trauma-informed care added to the team there, so a lot of layered support there in the school for mental health. And I think as far as the telehealth clinic, it also provides an opportunity, should a student have a unique need related to mental health, that the VCU's physician could also make referrals. So I think there are a number of connection points.
I appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing about current and then the possibility in the future. So thank you, Dr. Hughes, for that input as well. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And Ms. Cole Johnson, do you know what type of data we're going to collect to assess the efficacy of the telehealth clinic on improving student absences and improving health outcomes, et cetera?
Great question, and so I know that the HCPS team and also a few other partners in Henrico have really explored and looked at a few different locations and what they're doing. We're really looking to just follow the national trend of how often our students come into school, really looking at that time in between even, if they're able to stay in school after being seen in the clinic. We could absolutely pull that information for you to see what we'll be looking at, but definitely looking at some consistent indicators that others are doing as well.
Definitely love to see the data, and I think too often, we assume that outcomes are being affected, but we cannot definitively define the efficacy and the importance of scale in regards to helping us mitigate some of those current trends that we're seeing. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins?
Hi, I'm so excited, Ms. Cole Johnson, thank you so much, and your team, and the many individuals that are part of this effort. There are more that want to just jump in and be a part of this effort. It's a historic effort. I want to say congratulations, you are at the mountaintop. However, with that said, you know, when you're at the top of one mountain and you look up, it's time to climb the next one. And so I'm so grateful for listening ears. There's power in a name, and the name reflects the history. And so I think that the community and the communities that surround Holland Springs are going to be very pleased with the presentation that you've shared. It was well-done, so I want to make sure that you hear that, because communication is going to be a priority in this effort. As with any effort, and with many efforts, communication is always going to be impactful. And the way in which we communicate the Oak is going to be critical in this space. One, I have several questions. The first one is, a great segue, is around communication. As you are defining the communication timeline, I wonder if you've received feedback from the community on the best ways to communicate. This is innovative, this is new, I'll say it again, this is also historic, and I think it would be wise to ask the community, you know, as HCPS, we have ways in which we communicate, we have the template of disseminating information. I wonder, in your expertise, if we were to ask the community, I know our family advocates and many others are always in the community, including myself, to really just pause and ask around the best way to launch, the best ways to communicate as well, in addition to what we would normally do within HCPS? Is that something that you've had conversations on at all?
You know, we've thought about it, but I really like your intention of saying to ask the community. When we did our listening tour, we were intentional about getting emails and phone numbers. Folks wrote in a lot of comments that were really helpful, but we were intentional of collecting their info, and so what we plan to do is to start there. The data that I just shared with you all, we want to just condense a bit more, not only email it out to folks who responded, but also if we could have something interactive, I'll be connecting with our communications team around that. So a short video, we've been doing a bit of that throughout the listening tour, too, just to update individuals, and also want to, we know that sometimes hand-to-hand is the best way to really connect with folks who are not as connected digitally, and so we want to ensure that we can get even a one, you know, or two-page overview of the feedback that they gave us, so that they know that we're listening to them, we're hearing them, and that we're applying and moving forward.
Thank you for that. I would like to offer, as you look at communications, I know the internet is one powerful way to reach, you know, where you'll send emails, we have our website, I know we use social media. To me, that's all one touch point, one approach, but I'd like in this space to use all five. I'd like for it to be, of course, which you and your team do very well, face-to-face events, as well as the electronic ways we communicate, as well as some level of a handout, something that folks could have in their hand or put on the refrigerator, and then, last but not least, voice via phone. So as you are pondering your communication plan and strategies in this space, I'd like for us to utilize all the touchpoints and to have a nice balance, so that we're not putting all efforts into our electronic messaging and emails, but we're using all those touchpoints in this space. The other question is, if you could share, do, I know we did the survey, we got the feedback, some of that, of course, influenced your presentation. I also think it would be helpful for the community to see the responses. So it could be done in, you know, a high level, and you can utilize whether your pie chart, your bi-chart, your 3D charts, whatever way you choose, but I think it would be helpful for the community to see the overall responses from the survey. I think it's impactful, I also think that it's a good way to empower, so that folks can see the influence that we have is magnified. So I would hope that you would consider doing that in, I don't know, which venue you would choose, whether it's a school board meeting or not, but please consider sharing the results of the survey and the time and effort that so many provided, just as you did today with the listening tour. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, that's the first stop in our communication plan, to make sure that we circle that back to the community, so thank you so much for that suggestion.
Wonderful, and then, there's two more pieces touching base just on data. So we know that this is going to be the first for Henrico County, however, it's not the first within the United States. I think also, if we could take some of the data for some of the other areas that are doing this, and do some level of a comparison, so that we can actually give insight into expectations a little bit, whether that's done, you know, for all of Henrico, or just if it's centered around the Holland Springs community, but to really understand what this means, because we have examples, I think it's smart to show what the examples look like, so that there is a level of comparison, we can start setting expectations, et cetera. So also, if you would consider doing that, I think that would be very beneficial for folks who are trying to digest, well, what does this really mean? Great news, we can work smarter, because we have examples to share.
Absolutely.
As well?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, and the last thing is feedback around adding a museum into this space. Now, what that looks like, completely up to you and your team, looking at budget, funding, resources, et cetera, but really capturing the history, and absolutely, you can relate it to the roots of the Oak in Holland Springs, if you will. So in some way, shape, or form, making sure that that building includes some level of a, what I'm just going to use the term, museum, but some way that we're capturing the history of the legacy of the community that this building is within. So those are my thoughts. I'm extremely excited, I am going to be on the ground, I was in the past, I am right now, and I will be in the future as we continue to sort of promote and explain what this means, and the magnitude and the power that this is going to have for the community. So thank you so much and your team for all of your work.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogburn?
Thank you. Just real quick, I noticed in the chart that you shared about what family supports families are looking for, couldn't help but notice that, besides reading and math, it's covered up a little bit, obviously, by our virtual screen there, but mental health issues and family stress are right up there at the top of what people are asking for, and obviously, right now, it's such a stressful time for families, and so I'm so glad Reverend Cooper brought up the mental health issue and talked about that a bit, and that we know how that's going to be meeting the needs of families, and such an important thing, especially now during the pandemic, I think we all hear it all the time, about how stressed our kids are, how stressed families are, and, I mean, I think we would be, you know, lying to ourselves if we thought it wasn't a stressful time for all of us. And so I'm so glad that you did this, and you can see what are the high priorities that we need to be stressing. I mean, we were all there for the opening, it's such an amazing site, this community health clinic, so just as the board's representative to HEP, I will also highlight that Mike Taylor is here and thank the HEP for all the work that they have done to make this a reality. I remember being in a meeting a few years ago when the idea was tossed out, I know it's been, you know, they've gone and looked at other sites, they've learned from people who were doing this before us, and I just think to see it come to fruition is such a gratifying thing, and I think there's a lot more planned beyond the Oak, that's going to be exciting, but thank you for all your That's going to be exciting, but thank you for all you're doing, and thanks to HEF and to the HEF board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea, or Chair Shea?
Thanks so much, Vice Chair Kinsella. I just start with a shout-out to Ms. Cole Johnson and Mr. Taylor, who are truly the champions of meeting our families and our students exactly where they are, and this is just another great opportunity. As Ms. Ogburn mentioned, this isn't a multi-year process, a long time coming. Ms. Atkins and I were able to go with Dr. Cashwell and HEF to see a site in South Carolina back in the fall and really have some frank conversations with a school there and how it has impacted them in positive ways and learn from their challenges. And so, this has really been a tremendous effort across the board. I also think as we look at all the things that we've learned in the last two years, we know that these needs are not just in single acute geographical areas in our county, they are widespread. And so, as we look at expanding this hub-and-spoke model, it's really going to touch all of our districts across the division and be so important. Just the one question I have, that I've gotten some questions from my constituents about, and this is kind of for anyone on the team, I'm not trying to put you in the hot seat, Ms. Cole Johnson, but as we look at the financial sustainability of this, particularly the healthcare piece of this, can you talk a little bit about kind of how the funding, how the startup funding, and then kind of how the billing for the health provisions works?
Absolutely.
In a broad sense?
Yes. Great question. One thing about me, I love experts. And so,
Help is on the way.
I'm glad that Mike Taylor is here. They have really been leading us through this journey to make sure that we're positioning things in a way that's sustainable. So, Mike, if you could share a little bit about that stream?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, members of the board. So, glad to be here with you today, and thank you. It's a wonderful partnership, and we're super excited to be part of it. So, yes, there are several pieces. So, first, we've been working hard on some of the fundraising pieces for capital needs around equipment, the exam tables, telemedicine equipment, cameras, the components and things that go into that. So, the clinic at Glenly, the equipment that is there now has been funded primarily with some of our fundraising efforts through a number of partners that helped with that. And we're working on additional funding pieces that will be for equipment, again, both dental and health needs at Highland Springs High School at the Oak Street Complex. As far as, well, sustainability, there is the opportunity through VCU Medical School or VCU Children's Hospital and through the VCU Dental School for billing for services, both for insurance for those that may be on Medicare or Medicaid. As far as co-pays and such, we're working to look at developing a fund that could cover the cost of that so that, you know, everyone can have access as needed at school, and that can be covered through some funds that would be available on the foundation side. So, the idea that it would be completely accessible to every student that is interested and every parent that has, you know, given consent and said, yes, we'd like to participate in that and take advantage of it, with the ability to cover any co-pay if it's necessary and required by insurance. But then again, then the billing for services can move that into a sustainable piece. A lot of schools across the country that are doing this are able to do it sustainably because they can bill for services and do it in such a way that, again, kids don't miss school, you have less absences, and students that are out sick are tardies because, again, all that can be taken care of right there at the school side. And again, I think there's a number of partners that are interested in doing that. And from the medical side, not to speak on behalf of Children's Hospital, but when folks aren't able to get these services at the school level, often, they're using the emergency room as their primary care physician, so it is an expense to those medical providers. If they can come together and find a way to serve students in this way, then it frees up capacity in other places. So, hopefully, that was helpful, but we are committed to, again, helping create a fund that would cover some of those co-pays, and then again, for those capital needs that are around equipment, technology, to get the health clinics up and running to making that happen.
Another thing I would love to add to it is, one, is state and even federal government is really pouring a lot of financial resources into full-service community school models. So, one thing that's exciting about Henrico is we've already started with our 21st Century After-School sites as we're revving up for the full-service community school. I mean, I think the number is maybe 243 million or billion that they put in for funding for full-service community schools. So, there's a lot of opportunity there. And I think the other thing that's really attractive about this model is the lean fiscal approach and really working across different agencies to provide services that we're already providing. And so, the collaboration and the partnership really speaks to that when we're talking about the financial support for the project.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's right, using many partners to do the work so that, again, it's not one partner covering the full costs, it's everybody bringing the services that they can provide, the support, whether it's, you know, again, on the mental health side, SCAN and others that are part of that, all bringing those pieces together to serve it in the most cost-effective way.
Yeah, I think you're spot on there, Ms. Cole Johnson, with the fact that there's a lot of synergy there between the social determinants of health and the social determinants of education. And so, capitalizing on them and working with community partners that we all have these same goals for our students and our families, and they overlap, and so, how do we make this happen? I think you're spot on there. And Mr. Taylor, I really appreciate the insight on really HEF fundraising, the startup funds, but then people also understanding that our providers are taking care of a lot of the billing, the billing side of things. That is not an extra, an extra layer for our own kind of school clinic people that's being taken care of, the providers who are familiar with those systems and know how to navigate that. So, I appreciate both of you kind of chiming in because we want this to be, we want this to be sustainable. And so, it's a Herculean effort, and we want it to be successful. So, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Shea. I'll keep it brief just by saying thank you, and Reverend Cooper and I sit on the Audit Committee together, so I'm sure we're both pleased that the financial component, we just appreciate that being shared publicly, that there's not going to be, you know, funds changing hands, our financial folks in our school's offices will not be doing additional duties. But most importantly, from an audit perspective, we appreciate that being highlighted. So, thanks for that question, Chair Shea. I'm looking forward to not only this, we really enjoyed going and celebrating with Glenly, I'm looking forward to the Oak, that's what I'm going to call it, being opened, and then I'm looking forward to the expansion. I do have a question in terms of expansion because I know it's Virginia Randolph, when we rebuild Virginia Randolph, right? That's going to be our next great location?
Correct. Examining that site as the potential of a hub, remember, the spokes, you know, will be able to touch individual schools in each community, sort of like we've used the example with the Oak being the hub and then continuing to build that spoke system throughout the area, similarly with Virginia Randolph. We've also looked at Coyacus and Middle as a potential hub site, and again, branching out with those spokes to make sure we're touching the whole community.
Well, certainly, certainly those needs exist across Henrico County, so just thank you for that. We look forward to updates and expansion soon. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Vice Chair Kinsella. The next and final item I have is a recommendation that the school board approve the agreement for the placement, installation, maintenance, and operation of school zone speed limits for Highland Springs High School. I'm also recommending that the school board authorize me to execute the agreement in a form approved by the county attorney.
Board members, would someone make a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agreement for the placement, installation, maintenance, and operation of school zone speed limits for Highland Springs High School, and that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement in a form approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. They have a second?
Second. She can have it.
Was that Ms. Atkins?
I think it was.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Ogburn?
Aye.
Chair Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And the ayes have it, the agreement has been approved, and the school board authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement in a form approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kinsella and members of the board, and that concludes items from the superintendent.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this afternoon is the public forum. Citizens had until 4:30 PM on Wednesday, January 12th, to submit comments for the board's review using a link on the HCPS website. Citizens took advantage of that opportunity, and we sincerely appreciate their input. Comments were compiled and provided to us board members prior to the start of today's meeting, and those comments have also been posted out to board docs. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Board members, do any of you have any unfinished business? Could our virtual board members please say no?
Nope.
No.
Thank you, just for the record. And then, the next item on our agenda is new business. Is there any new business, board members?
Nope.
No.
Thank you so much, our virtual board members. And then, next on the agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, January 27th, 2022, at 1:00 PM, and a monthly meeting at 6:30 PM here in the New Bridge Learning Center auditorium. The meeting times may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned.